Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Alpine, Texas, will hold a regular meeting at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, April 21st, 2020 via Zoom conference in the City of Alpine, Texas. Meeting login details may be found on the www.cityofalpine.com for the purpose of considering the test agenda. This notice is posted pursuant to the Texas Open Media Act, Section 55043, Texas Government Code. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the council on any agenda item at determination of a quorum and proof of notice of the meeting. Remarks will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please send your name on the checklist so we may call you in order. Please wait to be unmuted then state your name and address. If you have a petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please email to the State Secretary beforehand. State law generally prohibits a council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for further discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and/or city council members may call a call to order to stop personal attacks. An individual continues to personally attack the elected official or staff member in a meeting, they may be barred. I now call this reading to order. Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance. The flag of the United States.
States of America.
And the Republic of America. For whose stance. One nation. Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Justice.
For all. And pledge allegiance to Texas.
Texas flag.
Texas flag.
Pledge allegiance to the.
Honor of the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the.
One state.
State.
Under God.
Under God.
One.
Invisible.
Okay. I'm glad everyone stood up for that. Okay, City Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Mayor, we do have a quorum and the notice was posted at 11:00 AM on April 17th, 2020.
Okay, thank you. Now we accept some public comments. Are there any? Okay, I hear no one.
Yeah, and Mayor, just FYI, we had asked ahead of time on the posting on the web. So we didn't receive anything, nothing came into City Secretary Solis either.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I've got one presentation. And it's about digging, safe digging. The State of Texas County of Brewster, City of Alpine. Proclamation, Alpine Safe Digging Month. Whereas thousands of times each year, underground infrastructure in Texas is damaged by those who do not under, who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in various interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety. And whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide excavators and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground line in the intended dig site. And whereas the Damage Prevention Council of Texas, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground facilities in all 254 counties, Texas counties, promote the National 811 Notification System in effect to reduce these damages. And whereas damage prevention is shared responsibly by using safe digging practices, persons living or working in Alpine and Brewster County can save time and money and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. Now therefore, I address Ramos, Mayor of City of Alpine, Texas, to hereby proclaim on behalf of City of Alpine and the Damage Prevention Council of Texas, the month of April 2020, as Alpine Safe Digging Month, and encourage excavators and homeowners throughout the City of Alpine and Brewster County to always call 811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident. In witness, and witness whereof, I do hereby set by my hand and cause the seal of City of Alpine to fix on this the 21st day of April, 2020. Address Ramos, Mayor of City of Alpine, Texas. Okay. And we'll go over to the reports. I have a brief report and I think City Manager and Dr. and Dr. Eta will kind of expand more on this. But so far, we have no active cases as we know of in the Brewster County area. Midland is the one that I've been monitoring and they had another case today which, and it's been having, I guess since the weekend, they've been having several cases. So they're steadily climbing up there. Total in the State of Texas, we have 19,477 deaths. So folks, this is serious. Please wear all your protective breathing apparatus, gloves, make sure you wipe down everything you touch, surfaces, especially your shopping carts and whatnot. And let's continue to keep Alpine safe. Like I said, so far, we're doing really good here. See a lot of people now wearing their mask. And at first, you know, they were kind of hesitant, it seemed like, because they figured people would kind of look at them strange. But I see more and more so that people getting used to it. Places like in China and whatnot, that's the norm for them because of the polluted air. But as long as we keep doing safety measures like that, I think we can continue to extend the no violence in Alpine and in Brewster County. Okay. We'll just go ahead and move over now to City Attorney's Report.
Hey Megan, can you pull Rod off of mute?
Counsel, there you go. Now, I was just going to get a report on what the State of Texas has done. Three counties of the area have been regarding the executive order. Governor Abbott, two days ago, issued another executive order that said that basically to continue to avoid social gatherings of 10 people. He maintained the closing of restaurants. He maintained the closing of schools. But he did open up restaurants for takeout and delivery services. And the also ordered that people not visit nursing homes, foster care facilities, and basically followed the previous guidelines that he issued as well as the.
Hey Rod, can you get a little bit closer to your microphone, please?
Can y'all have me here now?
That's better. Thank you.
Okay. Governor Abbott basically continued in place the things that he had before, opening up a little bit more takeout food. He continued to say that schools should be closed through the end of the school year. And he did say that he was going to have more announcements either Friday of this week or Monday of next week to potentially reopen more Texas businesses. But he talked about it being phased and based on some science. So it's slightly broader than locally, but not a whole lot different. In the other areas around here in Presidio County, hotels and short-term rentals continue to be closed. Although in Presidio, they're open for use of federal workers and National Guard troops and people like that. But I think some of that is happening also in Alpine. In Jeff Davis County, basically hotels and short-term rentals are closed in both counties. They don't want any social gatherings of 10 or more people. And they've recommended that people not, not go out unless they really need to. And they sort of have some, not exactly curfews, but they're enforcing people not going out for anything other than something that's important, going to food or restaurant or store or something of that nature. They're discouraging people just lounging around. So the, in general, the tri-county area is obeying the strictures that the governor and the county judges have issued. The traffic at the bridge in Presidio is way down, probably 20% of normal. There was a little bit of a line for Easter, but not much. And I think the signs that went up to discourage crossing into Mexico had a good impact to reduce that. So that's the, that's the report of what the other areas are doing out here. Anybody have any questions?
I just got a call today about the science at 67 and I-10 discouraging folks to go down to Mexico, which is good. And I've noticed the last couple of weekends, the traffic's been really down from the traffic flow that we used to see on Friday evenings and Sunday evenings going, you know, back and forth. So that's good.
There's been some gossip or some unverified reports of quite a few coronavirus cases in Hoinaga. But checking with the City Manager of Presidio, checking with his counterpart in Hoinaga, they don't really have any proof of that. It may well be like some of the other cases, maybe around here where somebody's sick, but they don't have a test that's positive. So, so far as I know, there was one case in Hoinaga that the person's over the symptoms now.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anything else? Any questions? Okay, we'll move over to City Manager Report then.
Mayor and City Council. Go ahead and work through this report. I've got, I did some imagery from Chris Rujia. Some of the stuff he's got posted on Visit Alpine, Texas. So I certainly know we're in some electrifying times, we'll call it that. We move forward into Coronavirus Disease 2019, also known as COVID-19. I asked Dr. Escobar to join us again today too. Second slide, we'll move to her and she's got some additional information to share with us as a public health authority for Brewster County, but wanted to make sure everybody was up to, up to speed on what we're doing. Certainly from an employee health and safety initiative, we continue to work from home as available and as the guidelines, you know, have, have asked us to do. We've also ordered additional masks, gloves, and other sanitary materials for our employees. We're migrating into customer-facing employees. This is a, is a policy, we'll be wearing masks. And then we've got other folks like in our Public Works Department that are out in the parks and things of that nature, certainly mowing and doing weed in this time of year, masks are, are helpful too. So we're moving forward that way with our employee teams. Certainly a lot of time, effort, and energy, monitoring the state guidelines and the federal messaging, working back with, you know, our county on responses as well as better understanding of the CARES Act and the implications to the community, how we work back with the Small Business Development Center, Liz Penya and her team. And then certainly our FEMA response is top of mind right now. So Megan and her team are working primarily back with, with Chief Martin and Scott Perry, but also Chris Rujia and Marcy, their time and their effort and the dollars that we're spending from a city perspective. The updates on the city ordinance certainly takes a lot of time, effort, and energy from our folks. I think the matrix that, that we've been pulling together, that we'll, we'll show here shortly, is certainly effort and a lot of good work. Also, the CV team meetings that the county has pulled together. Mayor and Chief Martin and I have been attending those, trying to make sure the voice of Alpine is balanced in, in what we're doing from a county perspective. And then, you know, continued hats off to Gio, who manages our website, getting communications out there. You know, we're trying to blog and message as much as possible, not, not certainly overwhelm people. You know, one of our rules of thumb is, you know, I don't want to just put something out there to put something out there. It needs to be meaningful and talk about what we're trying to do from a city perspective. And then, you know, I also wanted to mention, we've, we just had tremendous citizen engagement. You know, hats off to people like Roger Batka, Parash, Sharon. Several of them have really stepped up and provided some really good feedback to Chris and Marcy. And I know I'm not naming everybody and I apologize if I've missed any names. But their feedback has been just invaluable in how we have pulled things together too. So, you know, really many are stepping up to, to the challenge and just offering great work on behalf of Alpine and the community. So thank you for that, stepping forward. I will hand it over to Dr. Escobar. And then Megan, if you can pull Eta off of mute.
Perfect. Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Eric, do you mind unsharing your screen so we can share some screens on my side? Perfect. Let me pull up some data. So I do want to start by giving kind of an eagle-eyed view of what's going on in our area and other places. The first thing I want to do is give a idea of where we are locally. Okay, you should be able to see like a PowerPoint slide. This is as of, perfect. So this is as of today, our current area cases. I've just kind of done our immediate West Texas region. There's a couple of numbers in each area and they're really important to know in terms of data. So one of the things that we want to do is start differentiating how many cases they've had, any area has had in total compared to how many cases are active. Because as people have COVID-19 and then they recover and they're out of the window of risk, then they are considered a recovered case and are no longer an active case because they're out in the community and back to baseline. So we want to see how many active cases there are because hopefully as time goes on and we don't get as many new cases and more and more people recover, that's how we kind of get over the hump and on the downward slope to everybody recovering and not having new cases. So the, the, these numbers are indicating how many active cases or how many total cases there are. And then in parentheses, that's how many are active. So for example, Hoinaga still has its one case, Facos County, all of them are in Fort Stockton, have five cases. Reeves County has two, Crane has two cases in the county, however, they are both recovered. So there's currently zero active cases. So there's nobody currently being monitored for COVID-19. There's no active COVID-19 cases in that county. So it's, you, we have to start differentiating the numbers that are truly important. So Midland, a total of 64 cases, but only 41 are still considered active. You become in a closed case when one of two things happen, either that patient recovers and, and like I said, goes back out into the world, or two, the patient succumbs to COVID-19 and dies. So, and all of these active cases essentially don't have a conclusion yet. So those are the numbers we want to watch. Odessa, you can see there, El Paso is our big, big area of concern. You can see that most of the cases that are happening are, are in El Paso. And there's a large chunk of them that are still active. And so they have not, they have not come up, come out of their big surge because their new case rate still is pretty significant. And the, the rate at which patients are recovering is actually slower than how many new cases they're getting. So that's going to be really important data to follow. Del Rio, you can actually see they had 12 cases, but actually 10 of them are recovered. So Del Rio only has two active cases currently, which is really, really reassuring. And then San Angelo, as you can see, has 41 cases, same as last week. However, they have 20 active cases. This time, this time Sunday, San Angelo actually had the same 41 cases, but 29 were active. And now we're only down to 20 active. So they haven't had any new cases and nine of the people that had cases have now recovered. So that's what we want to see. We want to see the new cases kind of stop coming in and allowing the people who currently have COVID to essentially get, get treated or be monitored and then fall out of this equation altogether. So what we want to see is what we have in Crane County. We eventually want to see zeros on all of these areas, no active cases yet. So really important data to know. And then let me, I'm going to stop sharing for a second and share a different screen. Give me a second. Now we're going to go, okay. So this was the same map I had shared last time. It's been updated as of an hour ago. So this is our Texas state map with all of our 254 counties. And again, the nice thing about this map is that when you zoom out on over county, it has again, those confirmed cases, so the total amount of COVID-19 positive people in that county. But then it, it tells you of those 540, nine of them have died and 67 have recovered, which is what leaves you your 464 cases. So it, it allows you to essentially know how many of those 540 cases have been closed, one way or another. Reeves County, you can see that, Facos County, no deaths or recoveries there. So they're all active. And then here's Valverde County, which is Del Rio, so 12 confirmed, however, 10 have recovered. So that leaves you your two currently active cases. So really important numbers to keep an eye on. Midland, Odessa, we're still seeing also another, like the mayor said, also a large surge of cases on both. We're seeing more active cases and new cases and not as much recovery just yet. So those, all of our urban, closest urban areas are still places to monitor. I'm going to scroll up and look at our handy-dandy charts that we've been coming to rely on really well. So you can see from, compared to last week, when we look at the chart on the far left, that's our cumulative cases. And like I talked about last time, I know we have different folks on, on this call from the community as well. So I want to, I want to explain this chart, this graph again. So this graph, the teal dots along the bottom are the amount of new cases seen in Texas as a whole. So what we're seeing there is some days we have cases, you know, there were 960 new cases on this day. All the way out to yesterday, we had 683 cases. So what we want to see is the new cases to start getting closer and closer to zero. We don't want any new cases as a state, but then the orange line is the cumulative cases. So even if we get one new case today in Texas as a whole compared to yesterday, that orange line is going to bump up. That does not mean all of these cases are active. It just means that's how many total cases of COVID we've seen as a state. What we are wanting to look at is the growth rate, okay? That growth rate is going to be key. Our cases are growing at five, you know, we have today, we have 5% more cases than we did yesterday. This time last week, we were at 9% and before that, we were at 14%. So our, we are growing our cases, but they're, they're continuing at a slower and slower rate, which is, which is really, really what's making a big difference. So despite not having widespread testing, despite not being able to rely on testing to really determine if, who has COVID and doesn't have COVID, what you can see is these non-pharmaceutical interventions like social distancing, hand washing, all of those things are making a difference. That's the thing that's in play way more than any of the pharmaceutical interventions, including testing. And so, and our growth rate of cases has already dropped. So that tells us how effective those measures are. On this side, we, in the central graph, we are looking at our death rate. So we had talked about this again last time. The, the blue line across the bottom are how many deaths the State of Texas sees that day. So unfortunately, yesterday, we lost 20 lives in the state, in the State of Texas from COVID-19. The, the maroon line, that's, that's a cumulative record. So again, even if one other person dies in the State of Texas today compared to yesterday, that red line is going to bump up a little bit. So that's not going to be going down, that's never going to go down per se because it isn't. So that's going to be, that's going to be always cumulative. Sorry, my kids are bothering me. Um, so then again, the growth rate on the new deaths is going to be key too. So currently our death rate is expanding by 8%. We were in double digits a week ago. So we are slowing down on our death rate. The death rate will always be a little bit lagging from our, our cumulative case rate. Because remember, by the time somebody tests positive for COVID, their symptoms may be fairly severe when they start, but then they get more severe. They may end up getting hospitalized or, and then either recover or eventually succumb to COVID and die. So the, the death rate is always going to lag a little bit from when they were first found to be COVID positive. So I'm not surprised that the death rate is a little bit higher than the case rate. But the fact that both numbers are going down is key. And you can see that the curve of that slope is flattening compared to before. So that is very reassuring. The last graph is, is the big one. So when we talk about flattening the curve and being on the downhill slope of the curve, but that's going to be the curve that we look at. So this chart with the orange and blue bars on the far right-hand side, this is what we want to be looking at. This differentiates those active cases, those cases that currently are COVID positive in the state. And, and below that horizontal line are your cases of people that have recovered or have died. So they are, they are closed cases, for a lack of a better word, one way or another. And so what we really want to see is a drop in our active cases. So we want more people recovering than the active cases that are coming in. And you can see that from April 18, going into April 19, that was our first drop. You can see there's a slight drop in our orange bar. That was the first time we had ever seen that. And that is very reassuring. So our active cases, we went from 13,600 to 13,300. Okay, so we had more people coming out of active cases than new cases that came in. Of course, then yesterday, we went back up, it was just a one-day, one-day loop. But the fact that this happened ever, this is the first time that's happened as a state, is really reassuring. And you can see that for now, the way the data is trending as of an hour ago across the state, we may be again, having another, another drop in our numbers today. And well, the final, that's why that bar is semi-transparent, we'll, we'll have a solid amount of data passed after midnight to see if we had another successful day. But we'll go up and down on these bars until we really see, you know, a consistent decline in cases across the state. That's what we really want to see. Let me, I'm going to pull up the State of Kentucky because they have a really good curve as an example. So they had put in some pretty stringent measures and then we had some additional cases. You can see their curves. So they've had a couple dips. So things started improving and then they kind of came back up and then things started improving and then they came back up. And there's been a, there was a couple outbreaks in elderly care facilities and things like that that added to those cases suddenly. And so it doesn't mean that once we're on the downhill slope, we can't come back up unfortunately like Kentucky. But the fact that those little dips are possible, that's what we want to watch and we want to sustain those, those drops all the way back down to zero. We want to, we want to get everybody out of active cases into the recovered bars below. So. In terms of all of our numbers, let me get those, our testing numbers up and I will switch back to that. That's my last part.
Yeah, because Eta, there was a question about testing at the hospital here.
Yeah. Let me screen share our current testing numbers. Now, this was a slide I shared with the physicians yesterday in our tri-county area. We have a weekly call with all of the clinicians in our area, nurse practitioners and physicians and everybody, just so we're on the same page on a clinical side for treating patients. So we talk about all the data that's out there. So this was, this is as of yesterday. So you can ignore the, the charts at the bottom. Now, these are, we now have, you know, an additional 24 hours worth of data in the chart I just showed you. But the graph at the, the chart at the top is what I really want to show you. So our case counts as of yesterday in the US. So we had 581,000 cases in the US for COVID. But if you look at that, you know, out of every 1,000 people as a population, that was 1.8 cases of COVID out of every 1,000 people in this country. And if you look at tests, we've been testing as a country about nine people per every thousand. If you extrapolate the data from Texas, we are, we have 0.5 cases per 1,000 people. And from, this is the same actually from a week ago. So even with the increase in cases, our case rate hasn't bumped enough to really go beyond the 0.5 out of 1,000. And then if you extrapolate to tests, you have 4.6 tests being done as a state. You can see that our testing rate is about 50% of what we're seeing across the country. Texas has not been doing a very good job of testing widely. And we are actually the second lowest state out of 50 for testing in terms of our numbers. So despite being the second most populous state, third most populous state, we're, we're still not doing a great job with testing widespread. So that's unfortunate. However, like I said, despite not having widespread testing, our, our growth rate of our cases is still dropping. So it's these other interventions that we have in place that are really making a difference in our case rate. Now, the last one is what everybody's always interested in. So that's our tri-county area. We still. We still have zero positive tests, positive COVID-19 tests in the tri-county area. So we have sent testing out, we've had 40 tests that have been sent out and none, all of them have come back negative. And so we have zero cases in the tri-county area that are confirmed by tests. So if you look at our data and we put it per 1,000 people, because we wanna standardize the way we look at numbers, we have been testing at about half the rate of Texas and about a quarter of the rate as a country. Given the fact that we have zero cases, not just in Alpine, but in our tri-county area and a lot of our surrounding counties have also really started seeing a significant amount of people recovered from COVID and not a lot of new tests, new COVID patients factoring in, the fact that we're testing about 25% of the country's rate is still pretty robust. We're testing at one of the strongest rates for our population compared to other rural counties in West Texas. So when we look at Culberson and Winkler and, and Hudson and all of them, we're actually testing well beyond them. So I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but they're actually doing a pretty good job.
Hey Acta, one of the questions was about the cost of the test.
Right, so that's a really good question. So on the cost of the test, there have been mandates that I put into, have been put into place. But we're testing for COVID and then any treatment related to COVID and all of those things are going to be covered. So if you don't have a job right now, if you don't have insurance, then that should not keep you from seeing a physician and getting the care that you need and utilizing EMS if you need it and coming to the ER. What's happening is there are specific things that we have to do on the medical community side and that's part of the education that we put out to the tri-county medical community. We, as long as we are in our documentation showing that we are concerned for COVID and that, you know, we're following the testing parameters and we're getting test x-rays or CT scans and other blood work that we need to, because we want to, we are concerned about COVID, all of those tests as a group are all going to be covered. So that's not going to be at any cost to that individual. And that includes if you have insurance or not. This will, this will all be covered. You don't, there's not a copay facility associated with it or anything like that. So at no point should anybody in Alpine or even in our tri-county area have to worry about their ability to pay when it comes to COVID. There's another question, any presumptive cases? So I, so I do wanna speak to presumptive cases, because I know that that's been a topic of discussion locally. Presumptive cases are cases where patients come in, they may be having mild symptoms and we, they're not ill enough to qualify for testing, because remember, there's the testing shortage and we can't just test everybody. So if you have mild symptoms, we are saying, you know, worst-case scenario in today's, in today's climate, the worst-case scenario is that you may have a mild case of COVID. So we are going to give you advice, assuming this is COVID, because remember, that's the worst-case scenario. So we're gonna give you advice based on that. We're gonna have you go home, rest, hydrate. And if you, if you notice this or this or this or this, then we're going to go ahead and have you come back in. So, and, and you know, be retreated or be evaluated again. So with that being said, if we had people coming in with fever and cough today, then we would say, you know, this could potentially be COVID. If you have somebody come in in November with fever and cough, we may say, hey, I think you might have the flu. If you come in in July with fever and cough, we might say you might have a cold or allergies. So depending on what's going on in that moment on a larger scale, we're always gonna give advice based on worst-case scenario. It does not mean that they have COVID. But that's where that presumptive cases are, is yes, let's just assume that you have COVID, because that's the highest level of guidance and restrictions and parameters that you should follow. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna plan for the worst type of thing and we're gonna send you home with that advice. So that's what we, what we talk about when we're talking about presumptive cases versus test-confirmed cases.
So doctor, yesterday I saw in one of the reports that they were saying that we had reached the peak in the Permian Big Bend area. Now, that's, it was just a little bump, a little drop. I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not a doctor, that little drop is really not indicating that we are hitting the peak. It's really gotta be a significant drop. Am I correct or how would you view that?
Yes, yes, you are correct. So what, what the, the state guidelines are as well as the federal guidelines are for really saying that we're over the peak is we want 14 days of consecutive, you know, decreases in our cases. So just like we saw on the bar graph that I showed you with the orange bars and the blue bars, you know, we had a good day on April 19th and then April 20th, we took a step back again. So one day does not make a statistically significant change. What we really want is to really be able to vouch for those changes and really say we were at the peak. You know, we're not gonna know we're at the peak until we're about 10 to 14 days beyond the peak. And now, then we look back and say, oh, look, you know, that was our peak. And on the downhill slope since then. So you're right, one, one day's data is, does not data make, unfortunately. That's not how it works.
Okay, so going forward from say that report 14 days forward, if it's a significant drop, then we can assume that we peaked out and we're heading down in the right direction?
Yes, exactly, exactly. So if we watch those graphs and we follow those graphs, that's really what's gonna tell us. You know, if we, tomorrow's a better day than today and the next day's a better day than the day, you know, day before and we start trending down, people should, you know, these are public, public websites and public graphs. So what we're gonna see is people everywhere in the tri-county area should be able to watch that and say, oh, look, you know, today we did a better job than the day before. Unfortunately, we don't have great county-level data. So those, that graph, remember, is looking at Texas as a whole. So we're including Dallas and Houston and all of that in there. But El Paso still has not reached their peak and Midland, Odessa hasn't reached their peak. Midland, Midland has 20 more cases today than they did 48 hours ago. And so, you know, that's, that's an issue. As we can't really say that West Texas is over their peak if Midland's case rate went up by 50%. They went from 42 to 64 cases. That's a pretty significant jump in 48 hours. So I would say that I, you know, I disagree. I don't think we're at the peak. I don't think we're anywhere close to the peak just yet.
Okay, thank you, cuz yeah, that, you know, I saw that as women, that's not significant enough to want to say, hey, we're on the downside. And you know, it also kinda gives some folks that are looking at those graphs of false sense of security and say, okay, you know, we're okay, we can relax, we're not be wearing the mask anymore or, you know, the stay-at-home thing. And then all of a sudden, we're hit with another epidemic of it, or not us, we'll start our new epidemic here.
Right, right. Yeah, that's very, that's a very good point. I'm seeing some other questions. So I'm asked, being asked if there's a significant shortage of testing capability in Texas. It's not, it is a shortage. The short answer is yes, there's a shortage in the sense that I wish we could test millions of people every day. You know, our population in Texas is over 28 million, we're almost at 29 million. You know, being able to test a couple thousand in a day is not nearly enough for how populous of a state that we have. And so there is a shortage. Now, I will say that our, both our commercial labs and our private labs are, or sorry, commercial private labs as well as our public labs are ramping up their tasting, testing capability, but it's still not anywhere, you know, where we would want it to be. And I, there was a question on what's the cost of a test? I don't know what the cost of a test is because it's being, it's free. I don't, I don't have the data of what the actual, you know, economic like cost of a test is. I don't know that. But for a patient, it would be a free test. Let me see, are they planning on bringing in more ventilators? So I do wanna address the ventilators. So I, I know that our hospitals, a 25-bed hospital, we do have limited ventilators. But the thing to also remember is that ventilators are not the thing that will, will be the end-all, be-all that saves a person's life. As data is coming out about COVID-19, what's actually happening is there are different types of settings of support for someone's respiratory support that, that is, that can be provided outside of the ventilator. So provide pressurized air are actually the thing that seems to be helping with COVID-19. Ventilators do deliver pressurized air, but they are not the only thing that deliver pressurized air. So yes, we have a limited amount of ventilators, but that is not the end-all, be-all thing that will save a person's life. There are many other devices that we can use depending on that patient's respiratory status and a lot of other medical evaluations that we do.
Acta, are the, are the nebulizers helpful as well?
So the nebulizer machines are not helpful, because they don't deliver enough pressure. They do aerosolized droplets, so it helps with medication delivery with like asthmatics. If you have, especially if you have little kids that have asthma that can't do the inhalers and things, it's a way to deliver medications, but there's not a lot of pressure behind them. So what you really want is you're essentially wanting to try to, try to breathe in a, in a air, in a fire hydrant. You know, that's what you want, is all this pressured air going down your nose, nose and your throat. And so, but ventilators are not the thing that's going to be, you know, so let's say we have two ventilators, then that, that doesn't mean we can only save two people's lives at a time. We are limited, you know, we're not a large hospital like El Paso or Dallas or Houston. So we do have limits, but it's, the ventilators are not the limiting factor for saving lives here locally with COVID.
Couple of comments for Dr. Escobar, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I noticed on breaking news from CNN that the Senate has passed the 480 million funding bill for small businesses, testing and hospitals. So keeping that in mind, maybe planning on a strategy to see we can dip into that funding for our, our area, might be a good idea. And second, the, the CDC director says that a second possibly worst COVID virus outbreak may come in the winter in conjunction with the flu season. Hopefully not, but if that is a, something to be, maybe looking towards funding for the future is also a, something to look into. And third, I'd like to compliment Derek and other people at City Hall for making the decision on getting additional masks, gloves and sanitary materials for our employees. Very good. And not only for the protection, but also if using these materials, they will send out a, a good example to our residents, hopefully to do the same.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Are there any other questions? You know, we, I think we have a couple, my chat is flashing.
How, how many masks are required on a daily basis for something like a BiPAP or CPAP? Can a patient use the same mask throughout their hospital stay?
So the masks are different, they're not a, they're not a reusable mask or they're not the same as like a N95 mask or those, those surgical masks that look like an accordion that people are wearing around town. A BiPAP or CPAP machine has like a plastic kind of ma- mask that has some padding around the edge where the mask sits against the face. It almost, it almost looks like a, like a mini scuba diving mask that goes on the face. So it's something that's personal to that person. And then once you, once we have a patient, for example, admitted to the hospital, that's on a BiPAP machine, that a BiPAP machine, they would stay, they would reuse that same mask for their duration of their stay and then that mask would be disposed of. But this is a different mask than the ones that we are seeing being worn by nurses and physicians and then all of us in the community. So that's different. But yes, one person can utilize the same mask that's specific to a BiPAP or CPAP machine. It has like hookups for oxygen and things like that.
Does, next question, Acta, is, does a doctor have the option to order a test even if all symptoms are not present?
Yes, so medical judgment trumps all. And so when that patient is in that room with a physician, it is up to the physician to determine if a test needs to be done or not. So it is a physician's judgment, just like if we're the ones that get to determine if it's the right time to put a patient on a ventilator versus a BiPAP machine. It's the right time for us to say you got food poisoning versus you have the flu. You know, this is all clinical and medical judgment. So yes, there's not, we are not beholden to any specific laws for testing. There are guidelines for testing. The thing that we have to remember is that if our testing, if the labs that run the tests, which are not local, so we swab a patient, we send the swab off to get the test run on it. If we start testing everybody without the appropriate capability, the folks whose lives depend on knowing if we have COVID or not, they're gonna get stuck in that bottleneck at the laboratory, because they can only run so many tests at a time. So we're going to cost lives by starting to test everybody here and there with no symptoms or minor symptoms. And the people that actually need to know if they have that, you know, the disease or not, they're gonna get stuck in that backlog. So right now, that's why they're limiting their, their guidelines, say, to limit who we test.
So next, next question is, are the cloth masks effective for someone with asthma for essential shopping? Or should they seek something of heavier, denser material?
So that's a really good question. And a really good way to test the effectiveness of your mask is you want to light a candle or hold a lighter about a foot away from your face and put your mask on and try to blow the flame out. If you can move enough air through your mask that you can blow the flame or make the flame move or blow it out completely, then the mask that you are wearing is not effective enough to stop a large amount of the air coming out of your mouth. So you know, if that's just through blowing, imagine the force behind a cough or a sneeze. So that's a really good way. And if you have N95s or any of those, even accordion-type surgical masks that we use in the hospital, you can do the same kind of experiment with those compared to the cloth mask you have. And so the more layers of a cloth mask, you know, that's made, that makes the cloth mask, the, you can still breathe, but the air is not flowing straight through the fabric. It kind of twists and turns, finding the holes, and it helps with making it more effective. So I have a cloth mask I wear around town and mine has three layers of cotton material. And so I've tried it, I've tried the, you know, light a candle and blow it out with my, my cloth mask on and it won't, you know, it won't even flicker. So that tells me that the airflow coming out of my mouth is being stopped or diminished enough that I can't even make a flame, you know, dance. So it's a really, that's a really good test that you can do at home.
Acta, do we wanna go ahead and screen share the tiered matrix?
Uh, yeah, we can.
Is now a good time or any other? Did you wanna lead it on, or me, Acta?
You can go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, so in mayor and council, I had shared this with you earlier this afternoon. This is the, the product of all of the work that Dr. Escobar and Chris Rujia and Marcy Tuck and myself have been pulling together. The risk assessment criteria created a six-level response here. The, the title on the top is Brewster County, city of Alpine. I did have a chance to visit with the judge earlier this afternoon. This was one of the byproducts that the city was, was taking initiative on to help the county with as well. The goal would be to have some sort of matrix that both the city and the county could fall under. That way, it would be easier for citizens to follow. I went here, took a look at the federal side. You know, President Trump has issued a three-phase approach. And so all of these different sections took into account the phasing from the federal level two. And if you look at it from level zero, that's, that's baseline. And then you move to the right and the situation becomes worse and the restrictions become more. And so we look at the first row of the risk assessment criteria. And I'm certainly not gonna go through, or I mean, I could go through and read every box if, if council wanted. But I can also just kinda speak to the high level of it as well. And maybe Dr. Escobar can go a little bit more detail for us. But, but generally, we were looking at. Uh, but, but generally we were looking at, uh, you know, things like when you baseline, that's really, uh, there's still COVID out there, but there's, there's not something real specific, uh, in our area. And as we, as we move through, uh, we really look more, uh, towards where level three is right now on the restrict column that says, you know, there's high risk of importing COVID-19 cases in our surrounding high traffic or high travel routes such as Ohinaga or Stockton, Del Rio. Uh, so as Dr. Escobar had talked about earlier, we see cases in those adjoining, counties outside of our, our tri-county area. The, the second row is really looking at individual responsibilities. So as you work through this matrix here, uh, we put a lot of thought into, um, you know, if you're at level zero baseline, uh, what does that mean? Uh, if you're at level one, prepare. Uh, if you're at level two, reduce. Uh, if you're at level three, restrict. Uh, certainly right now, if you look at the governor's orders and our emergency order from last week, household gatherings only. We're, we're looking also at, uh, the introduction of mandatory masks in indoor public buildings and outdoor public venues. This is, uh, you know, we see the governor's order that came out on Friday, the opening in the state parks. One of the things he talked about was, yes, you can use the state park, but you need to have a mask on. And so we're really trying to make sure we're in alignment there. And, uh, you know, I'll, uh, I'll jump in with the, the mask thing because I, I know it's, it's been varied usage across the city. Some of the stuff we talked heavily about is if you look at a lot of the Asian culture, they, they've done a wonderful job at wearing masks, uh, over the last several years. It's helped in minimizing transmission. They also are doing it effectively during the, the COVID-19 outbreaks as well. Culturally, it's not something that, uh, you know, we've done in the U.S. And so how do we manage and move into an environment where we see that using of the masks helps really lessen the amount of, of transmission of communicable diseases between people? So this is really our opportunity to make that adjustment. And if we do it community-wide, we do it county-wide, uh, then people feel comfortable. And, you know, sometimes it's faced, you know, there's that embarrassment of, oh, I, I don't want to walk in with, with a mask on. You know, also I think, you know, the conversation earlier was good relative to, you know, how do you make your own? Uh, there are a lot of different YouTube videos out there that show a, a lot of different ways to, to pull a mask together. Uh, there's also a lot of good material out there on, uh, what, what Dr. Escobar was talking about is the effectiveness of different fabrics, uh, what helps limit more transmission. So we certainly, from a city perspective, will, will share some of that data on our website tomorrow as well. And, uh, that, that's going to be a, a very important thing as we look at, at this matrix is uh, where mask wearing, uh, becomes important, uh, both in, in public buildings, retail stores and public venues. When we think about community responsibilities and public spaces, you know, really is about, uh, having our community embrace the challenge and how we, uh, you know, interact with each other. So when, when we looked at the community responsibilities specifically to public places, you know, right now we're really kind of in that level three. There's no gathering, uh, outside of, of household members. We do have a curfew, uh, outdoor exercises allowed with, really with household members. Uh, there's social distance required, uh, from others. So, uh, as we, you know, as we move forward, uh, you know, you think about a level two reduce, um, you know, that starts, you know, limiting the, you, you start gathering, but it starts limiting the amount of people. And certainly a focus on healthy and people having that responsibility of saying, hey, if I'm feeling under the weather, I need to stay home and, and stay away from, from other people. So, you know, the other row that we looked at was education childcare facilities. We certainly know that with many essential workers that we have, uh, childcare becomes an issue. My kids aren't at school, um, you know, but I've, I've got work and I've got an opportunity to make income. You know, or childcare facilities available and under what pretense? And so really looking at, uh, that also, you know, school meals, that's something that our school district continues to provide, the breakfast and the lunches. So, you know, within the matrix, how do we, um, how do we work through that? So, um, moving forward, uh, into travel and certainly know the travel is a big, big item with our hotels, motel, short-term rentals. You know, Alpine is one of those destination spots. Big Ben region is a destination spot. And when we think through, uh, you know, we'll call it the non-essential travel because right now our current emergency ordinance, uh, allows for overnight stays of essential workers or military or law enforcement. But they, you know, the real question is around non-essential travel, uh, sometimes called tourism. You know, right now, if we, if we look at, at level three, which is kind of where we're at, where it's shelter and place, limited workforce, essential workers. Yeah, the other thing is, is anyone returning from areas, uh, with community spread of COVID-19 must enroll in a 19, 14-day self-quarantine, uh, with a plan to work from home. And so that was something that there was a lot of thought put into. If somebody goes to Austin and, uh, and then comes back, uh, how do we, do we work with that? We know Counselor Stevens is, um, you know, made a trip to, to California, or, you know, how, how does he deal with that? I, I personally haven't made a trip to Albuquerque because I don't want to go into quarantine, honestly. Uh, but that, that's decisions that others are having to make, uh, on a day-to-day base. I do know I've got some, there's got to be some, looks like chat questions coming in. Uh, Hector, feel free to stop me along the way if you see a question that maybe we need to address. As we move down the matrix, we're looking at hotel, uh, short-term rentals, motels. Um, you know, right now, the non-essential travel or tourism, uh, is, is not being allowed. There are essential emergency travelers only, you know, the, the stay in the room or the rental unit. You know, you're not here to, to, uh, do touristy type activities, I guess. Uh, we have been working through, uh, reports to, uh, our police department on a daily base. Hotel years have been wonderful at responding on those. But one of the things that we, that, that did come up is, is we looked at this was this question about, you know, if you do, if you do go out of town and you have to come back in quarantine, you live in a single bedroom house with you and a spouse, and, and you can work with a hotel or short-term rental to have that place, uh, be a place of quarantine. So that was something that, uh, was added in here because it really seemed to make sense. That would help eliminate spread to another, uh, family member. So that, that was added in here. And then, you know, the other piece is, um, you know, the target obviously is how do we get to level two where you start opening up to the non-essential travelers as well? And that would be, you know, the next step for Alpine. So when, when that determination is made. But certainly still at that level, you know, keeping the public spaces in your hotels, uh, closed, not really the breakfast service per se. And, and then not the housekeeping during the stay. Of course, masks required in the, in the public area is for, for guests and staff. You know, moving down the matrix to the restaurants and bars, level three is really maintaining a level two, which right now is the bars are closed. Uh, the restaurants are takeout only or curbside where available, um, and certainly limited entry. We know some restaurants, you know, might not have a drive-up window. You know, not everybody's like Sonic that everything's a drive-up. So we, we certainly have seen, um, you know, our restaurants be, you know, have solutions on that. So, uh, you know, when we, one of the things that Chief Martin and I talked with some of the restaurateurs, before that governor order came out, shutting the restaurants was that 50% table density. That way, if, if your occupancy for tables is 100, then you might have, you know, 50 people capacity for 50 seating and spread out. So that was, uh, certainly thought through, um, in, in the building of this matrix. Then the last column was around retail, uh, and other local businesses. Really, right now, what, what we've been working on primarily with the larger retail stores or the, the grocery stores like Porter's, Dollar General, Tractor Supply has been, how do you keep that, uh, occupancy to 10% of, of what your, your fire code allows? So we know Porter's, for example, you know, allows about 475 people. And so how do you get that down to 47, uh, within the business at one time? Senior hour for operations. You know, the, the next step that, uh, the governor had outlined for this Friday was the drive-through or curbside only for the non-essential type businesses. And then also one of the things that, that was talked about is, you know, public or shared commercial vehicles, uh, single occupancy only for your work and truck crews. So how do you, uh, it's something certainly from the city, county, uh, and, and some of the other entities. How do we keep that down to, to one person per vehicle? But certainly at level three, your personal service businesses are closed. But as you move into level two, uh, those start opening at, um, a 50% occupancy. We do know that, that people need to get haircuts. They, you know, have other, uh, personal service needs too. So then it would also, from a retail perspective, uh, go from that curbside or drive-through into a 50% occupancy. Uh, we did say but use discretion. That is the, always the, the discretion of the owner of the store to determine whether they want to open or not. So I, I know I really focused on the middle two columns, uh, because that's really, you know, level three is, is, is in, in alignment with where we're at. Level two is, is where we're driving to get to. Recommendations, regulations are always subject to change by state or county executive order. Um, and, you know, chart is progressive. So things that are required in a, in a, uh, lower level, you know, would, would be maintained at higher ones unless they're explicitly changed.
Eric, this is Rick. So, you know, moving from level three to level two, uh, starts beginning to open the city back up. Uh, certainly dependent upon what Governor Abbott does. What do we know about projections from the governor? And when there might be some activities that would cause him to change the current restrictions from where we are at level three?
So, so we do know that on, uh, the governor's committed to enhance his executive order by next Monday, April 27th. And, uh, what, what we've been anticipating to do from a staff perspective has been, uh, to request an emergency, uh, or a special meeting, I'm sorry, for council to reconvene, uh, next Wednesday, which would be the 29th. Uh, that would give us two days, 48 hours to digest and make any adjustments as necessary and recommendations to council. We, you know, we, we do anticipate that, uh, with the, the team of people that he's pulled together, that there will be, um, you know, loosening, um, guidelines, uh, they'll have, I'm sure milestones to meet as well as timelines. You know, I don't know if, if at the state level, you know, they'll say from, you know, one level to the next, it's, you know, takes 14 days. You know, Hector may have a little bit more insight on that, but it wouldn't surprise me to see something of that nature.
Yeah, on the 14 days, um, so at the very top, Eric, that where you have your screen share right now, at the very top, um, it says moving, moving up a level and moving down a level. So moving down a level is what we're looking at right now. And this is the federal guidelines put out by, um, by, uh, President Trump's, um, his task force. And so what his guidelines say is, and so we're making sure that all of our stuff falls within our state parameters as well as our federal parameters. And it says that we can move down a phase if all of the following criteria met, and he's put forth three criteria. So the downward trajectory of COVID-19-like cases, because we know that we can't test everybody. So, uh, you know, the downward trajectory of COVID-like cases in the past 14 days, downward trajectory of documented cases or percent of cases per population, and, and we're at zero. Um, so in the last 14 days, and then the local testing and hospital is not at max capacity because obviously we're at max capacity and then we open up even more, then that's, you know, not going to help. And so, um, as long as those three criteria met, so it looks like if, let's say we stay, we get through all of this with zero cases in this entire region, then, you know, we would be moving down each phase every, potentially the fastest would be every 14 days. Um, and then, uh, so, and the overall risk assessment, that first row across the top in that chart, kind of talks about depending on what's going on around us, if we may need to tighten back up. Let's say we start opening and then we start getting cases or our region, um, is still seeing a spike. That kind of gives us an idea of, well, do we really want to go past a certain level? Do we really want to start, um, you know, let's say level two, it says discouraging travel to urban areas, but level one doesn't have that. Well, what if El Paso and Midland, Odessa are still seeing a huge spike in cases? Is it worth going down to a level one and, and, you know, reducing those, those kind of, uh, personal limitations we're putting on ourselves? Um, if we know that that's not necessarily a smart way to go just yet. So the nice thing about the federal and state guidelines are that they are currently, and we'll see what happens down the road, but they are, um, vague enough that it allows everybody in their own regional situation to determine what the best course of measure is within certain parameters. So they're not giving us, you know, just, you know, open, open, um, access to make up whatever we want. And we're being really careful to make sure that we're still abiding by all of that. But our situation is going to be very different than El Paso, let's say. So El Paso, they may not care if people come in and out of El Paso because El Paso already has hundreds of cases. So if people want to leave El Paso, when El Paso itself has cases, that may not be a big deal. We have zero cases so far that are, you know, documented. And so for us, that is a big deal if people from El Paso start coming in here. And so the, the priorities in different areas, depending on what's happening, is going to be very different from location to location, even within a state and within the West Texas area. And so, um, Governor Abbott and President Trump seem to be very aware of those things. Um, and they're, they're providing enough flexibility in their guidelines that we can still tailor it somewhat. They're still obviously reopening, but we can tailor it somewhat to do this in a safe, you know, stepwise fashion, which has been really helpful. Um, and, but all of this falls under both, both of those levels of guidelines.
In, in part the reason, and, and Doc, that was a, a great rundown. In part, the reason I raised the question is people are going to want to know what it takes to get from level three to level two. And I think, Eric, what you talked about is, uh, city council meeting next Wednesday to kind of review where at, where Dr. Escobar walked through is this whole notion about, hey, there aren't any here right now. My sense is our challenge is the risk of people leaving and coming back. And the second risk is people coming from elsewhere and not, and bringing it into Alpine. Those are our two biggest risks that we have. And so, uh, my bias is if someone's leaving into an area that's got risk, we need to make sure they got their 14-day quarantine in place. And so I've been back Alpine twice since it started. No one would know I came back except the, the airplane buzzing, mid-landing, hangar, home, home back to hangar, then leave. And, uh, you know, I can self-quarantine easily in the airplane. But that's part of, I think, our challenge as a community is really going to be having the honest conversation with our neighbors and friends if we know they're going to Midland and we're going to have to get over asking them, hey, did you go to Midland or not? If you did, how can you not stay at home for the next 14 days? Those are really hard conversations, which goes to the value, in my view, of why it's so important to wear masks.
Rick, and you made a great point there because I've been saying that, that, you know, since we're free of the virus, you know, we got folks that are looking at us, well, you know, they don't have it there, so let's go visit or stay a while.
Yep.
And, you know, even though they're not, you know, even though they don't have the virus as an active symptom, I guess I'd say, but it's still in them. And because I've been reading up on it, that some people can carry it and it doesn't bother them at all, but they can sure the heck transfer it to somebody else. So, yeah, that is a major concern about that. How do we monitor that aspect of it? Or both ways, you know, travelers coming in or ours going to Midland Odessa, El Paso, and then coming back. If, you know, someone is not there to step in and tell, guys, you need a quarantine yourselves, like you did a couple of weeks ago, which I need to applaud you for that. But, yeah, you know, we, you know, it's a tough situation, you know, but we need, we're going to have to stand firm on it in order to keep our area clean and free.
Yep. What's your great matrix?
Well, thank you.
Yep, great job, Eric.
We will certainly also get this matrix out on the website tomorrow morning too. Because I know folks, as they've been viewing it, are going to want a copy of it.
Yes.
Dr. Eka, one quick question. You have two ventilators at the hospital. Could you put a T hose in there and service two patients out of one?
So technically, yes. In real life, no. And the reason is, it's a little bit more complex than that. When you have somebody on a ventilator, there's a lot of factors that go into how you put somebody on a ventilator. All of the settings on a ventilator have to do with a person's size, their lung capacity, something called lung compliance, so how stretchy and elastic their lungs are. If you have COPD and you're an ex-smoker, then you lose a lot of that elasticity, for example. So you can't have somebody who's 30 and runs a marathon getting T-connected to the same vent and the same settings as someone who's 75 and has had a 20-year smoking history. There are two different sizes, there are two different lung capacities, their medical needs are very different, and they're sharing the same settings on a ventilator. And so one of them is going to get more than he needs, and the other one's not going to get enough of what he needs. And so it's not, yes, in a large ICU, that is possible because you have 40 patients to choose from, and you can say, okay, room 13 and room 27 are similar size and similar, you know, similar lung capacity. So we can put those two together. When we only have, you know, limited ventilators and this community to share from, what are the chances that we're going to have people that match up exactly with their needs that are going to come into the hospital at exactly the same time and, you know, be able to T-piece them together? So yes, in theory, it works, but in reality, with where we are and how many people we'd have to choose from, I think that would be near impossible.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right. Jump back to the slides. Dr. Escobar, any other comments? I mean, I know we've been on this for, well, over an hour now.
No, no comments. I'm going to get my kids dinner and get them in a bath. But if you need me to jump back on, if someone can just shoot me a text and I'll jump right back on if other questions come up.
Okay, perfect. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor and council, I'll run through a couple of these remaining slides, and we've got Chris queued up as well. Utility infrastructure, certainly Scott and I talk daily. One of the things we want to make sure, we stay current on our paid new service insulation requests. Even though we don't have customers coming into the lobby, we still have customers, you know, new residents or, you know, things of that nature. So we're managing through that. You know, average quantity of leak and work orders are out there. Certainly talked about the care and the hygiene as we're addressing with our customer contact situations. And then certainly, you know, we just top of mind with our water and our sewer procedures to ensure that we've got a robust water sewer and also gas infrastructure. You know, we continue to take action to make sure our citizens can communicate with us if there's concerns about paying their water bill. We're adhering to the guidance of the no shut-offs and just really working with citizens on a needs base. Don't want folks to fall behind. One of the other things we had talked about last meeting was, you know, what the ordinance was on the water sewer sanitation and gas billing. We've been working to restructure that so that we address account ownership as well as new service requests and street cuts. So I'll have that for council next meeting too. So EMS services, I think as many of you are aware, the, you know, Scott or family has experienced some significant losses over the last half year. Had an opportunity to visit with Mike this past week on his short and mid-range objectives relative to EMS. Would like him to report out of the May 5 meeting. We can certainly bump that to the 19th if need be. You know, certainly with the challenges, we've had some other vendors step up and say, you know, if Mike has some challenges, they'd be glad to help fill the gap. So during a pandemic, that's something that has been brought to my attention from a variety of different entities in town. Certainly, they understand, you know, the challenges that Mike's had. And we just want to make sure that we have continuity for citizens too. We'll also be addressing the fire services. You know, we had that review done, that review assessment in July 2017. We also had a gift of dollars from Energy Transfer Partners after they put in the pipeline. So we want to get a full equipment inventory, personnel qualifications, training, and whatnot. So that is, Chief and I are targeting to have that done the end of May, so we can talk with council about that in early June. Moving forward, Mr. Rujia. And Megan, if you can take Chris off of me.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, thanks. So the images you're seeing on this slide, let's see, I guess the first thing I'll say is that the the written report that's in the council packet and that was delivered to the council members before the meeting, that contains all of my activities on tourism promotion and really anything else that's been assigned to me over the last month. But I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that unless there are specific questions from the council. I would refer anyone listening to the council packet, which is, the link is there on the agendas page on the city of Alpine.com website. If they have any questions, please contact me directly. But what we're seeing on this first slide is one of the primary activities in terms of communications that I've been doing lately. When the question of coronavirus first arose and we realized that we needed to start discouraging people from traveling, Eric and I had a meeting and discussed that what we would do is, is we would just focus on sharing photography, but explicitly not telling people to come here now. And so what you're looking at there is some of the images. I've been trying to find the most wide-open space and peaceful photography that we've got in all the thousands of images from our photo contest. And I've been posting them on Instagram and Facebook and Pinterest and Twitter with kind of positive messages. I've been following Eric's lead there. He does a great job at meeting with a positive outlook. And so I've been, I just do, you know, WWD at every morning. And so that's what you're looking at there. So what I mainly want to share with you all is, as best we can guess, the outlook for the rest of the fiscal year. Of course, we have no clue the timing of anything in this world right now. So all of these things are guesses, but I thought I'd share you the best ones that we have available. So looking at the, as we're coming out of this situation and as it becomes safe for people to travel, or at least safer for people to travel, we're going to need to suggest that Alpine's a nice place for them to come and do that. And so that's where our hotel occupancy tax balance comes into play. That's the fund that we would use to try and get our hotel and visitor businesses healthy again. And so what we're looking at here is through the end of March, we had already collected in this fiscal year $323,530. And that, if you compare that to the last fiscal year, that's at 48%. So six months, we, I think basically what you're looking at there is March was obviously, it took everything, it took a nosedive. So our first five months were quite good because we still were almost on track for half of last year's collections in the first half of this year. So then the question is, well, what happens next? And so I've looked at three different models that I've been taking from various webinars and online meetings with the Texas Association of Convention and Visitors bureaus, the Texas Travel Alliance, and Destinations International and other statewide and national tourism groups. And so our worst-case guess is we just do a straight 50% of our hotel occupancy tax. And there you're looking at almost what we've already collected. So that's our worst case, but it doesn't seem particularly realistic since we're almost there already. So our next, our next model also came from those industry groups. And what you're looking at there is if we collect zero, if we have zero travelers that are paying the hotel tax and through the end of June, and then you ease in, in July, we see 20% of last year, August 30% and September 40%. And so you see a middle picture there at $363,225 through the end of the fiscal year. And the third one is one that Eric and I had discussed, and that's where we see a 20% collections from April through June, which I don't think we'll see that in April, certainly. And then July through September at about a 45% rate. So that's quite optimistic, and I suspect that we're going to see something in between our moderate and optimistic projections there in terms of collections. So how we, what that then means in practice is we're obviously not going to have as much new money as we would have projected for the appropriations that you all voted on. We do have a healthy fund balance, so the things we absolutely need to spend, the money's there to spend. We're not going to, as I understand it, we're not going to bankrupt the hotel fund by keeping to our spending plan if we needed to. But I'm looking closely at things we can cut. Let's see. Next, I wanted to share with you, now that we know what kinds of dollars we might have to spend to promote, what is our outlook in terms of the market that we would be promoting to? And so when I look at the industry leaders who like to write articles predicting things, one of the things that they predict is the mindset of the traveler once the doors start to open and people start to travel again, and everyone realistically will be hesitant. And so they're expecting that travelers are going on a state close to home, in-state or closer. They're going to not want to fly or get in somebody else's vehicle or in a mass transit kind of situation. So they're going to drive their own vehicle and they're going to look for small, outdoor-focused destinations. So all of these things actually bode quite well for Alpine and the Big Bend area. Now, of course, I want to stress that in none of this am I suggesting that we want to barrel, throw open the doors and rush into anything. This is just a picture for when it actually is sane and reasonable to proceed. And so, next slide, Eric. So the next question is specifically who our visitors are and what their outlook would be. This information came from Mind Ecology, which is the agency in Austin that we got our hotel report from right at the start of this fiscal year. And so I'm going to run through really quickly our three biggest demographics. And these, believe it or not, these names and quotes are the nationwide used terms for these demographics. I think the Nielsen group came up with these things. But super-suburbans are actually our top performing in the sense that more of these people, these people are more likely to come to Alpine than any other group compared to their percentage in the population at large. And so these are fairly high-income suburban families in their 30s with small children. They tend to be pretty affluent. They're certainly white-collar professionals. And so as such, they're among the most likely to be able to work at home. And according to some research I looked at from the McKinsey Group, white-collar industries like the ones that employ these people, they will account for only 5% of the cut, job cuts in this first wave of job impacts. Now, so our primary demographic is, looks like they'll be pretty well set to weather at least the early parts of this downturn. Everybody's going to be affected and everyone, I expect, is going to be hesitant. People will want to travel, but everybody's going to be thinking twice financially about everything. So next slide, Eric. Our next highest group are called accumulating families. These are slightly less affluent, non-urban families. A lot of these are, could I go back up, Eric? We jumped, we jumped one.
Oh, sorry.
There you go. Now, these folks are, they're more diverse in where they live. They're still really primarily suburban people. Their children are slightly older. Their employment is a lot more varied. And I think these folks are a lot more likely to be affected by job losses than our top group. And so though Alpine is a relatively inexpensive destination, so it'll still be attractive, I think. But it might be more difficult for these folks to make the trip. So then I'm ready for the next one. And our last group is called affluent suburban nesters. And these are very high-income suburban retirees. These are the highest annual income of any of the three groups of these guys. And so one might think if they're on fixed incomes and things like that, that might be more able to weather. They're not looking at job income to live on, so job loss will not be an impact for them. But they are relying on savings and investment income. So as the stock market moves, probably so do these people follow. And since they're older people, they're going to be rightly cautious to resume traveling. So these folks, I think, will largely be able to resume traveling, but they'll be well-advised to be very careful when they decide to do so. So that's kind of an overview of the challenges that we're, we and our customers are looking at. And then lastly, on the next slide, I wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, yeah, that's all well and good if people can, want to come to Alpine and can come to Alpine. But what are they going to find when they get here is a big question. This is the biggest single decline in travel in modern memory, according to the experts. And hospitality businesses, as we know, were the hardest hit. So restaurants, tourism, and then small businesses of all kinds are centers of the highest job losses. And not only that, more than 30% of the vulnerable jobs in the economy are in firms with fewer than 100 workers, which is almost every business in Alpine, except for the government, possibly BBT, I don't know what they're, and so Ross. And so 44% of hotel jobs nationwide are expected to be lost. And I've heard a prediction of as many as 75% of all of our restaurants may not be able to reopen at all nationwide. So we are looking at really an existential crisis for our local businesses that have been forced to close. And in this climate, hotels in other places, a lot of them are closing just because the 15, 10, 8% occupancy that they've managed to sustain is not enough to keep them open. But ours, we have to remember that they have been forced to close by our very order. And so, so I, one of the things that I feel I should share with you is that many, probably not all of our hotels, feel that the discouragement of travel that we accomplished by closing the hotels has indeed been accomplished. And they look at the travel that's already happening. And some of them argue that either they should maybe be allowed to house some of these people who are already shopping at our stores and getting gas, or just go the whole way and put up roadblocks and block. There's a lot of frustration of looking at the current situation from among the hotel community. I know that you all, certainly Eric, were all wanting to move from level three to level two as quickly as is safe. But I would definitely say there's a lot of pressure on the scale from the business side. We are really looking at a serious existential threat to a lot of our hospitality businesses. existential threat to a lot of our hospitality businesses. Uh, and I don't want to sugarcoat that at all. Uh, and then last, uh, last thing I'll mention is one, uh, slightly more fun thing that, uh, I've been working with the, uh, the Big Bend Citizens Alliance on their relief fund. They've been raising money to, uh, to help folks who've lost work and income in Brewster County. And so we're putting on a two-day, actually, this is, when it says May second, but it's spread onto a second day because we have enough musicians. But we're gonna do a live stream concert. Uh, we now have thirty-one musicians signed up to play and we're getting more every day. Uh, each one will play a twenty-minute set. So it looks like we'll have at least, uh, five hours plus of music each of those days. And we'll have a donation button for the, uh, for the fundraiser. Half the money's gonna go to the relief fund and the other half is gonna go to, into a pot for the musicians who play because they are also a hospitality industry that have lost their ability to make a living. So if, if folks are hobbyists like myself, uh, they can put their share back into the pot. But, uh, it's a way where we can, you know, help folks who, uh, who have lost their jobs and, and help the musicians at the same time. So that's, uh, something that's coming up at the start of May. And if you have any questions, I would love to answer.
Hey Chris, this is Rick. So where will it be streamed at and on? How do you access that?
It's gonna be on Facebook. The, uh, there's a page and an event there right now. It is facebook.com/oneononeonone. And all those ones are numerals, numeral one-on-one-on-one. And, uh, let's see, I'm sharing it, uh, pretty actively on Visit Alpine. And, uh, so hopefully if I do a good job, it will be hard to miss.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yes, this is Rod.
Yes.
Well, if there's one silver lining behind this whole tragedy, I've read where, uh, it may want, it may encourage people to move to more rural areas that had a better outcome with the COVID virus.
It may.
And Alpine is one of those.
Yeah.
I'm just suggesting that as you think about ways to market Alpine, as, as the year goes on and we get more opened up and, uh, you, you might encourage people to move to Alpine to, to do their online business and to raise their families.
Yes, it's an excellent idea.
Great. Any other questions for Chris?
Nope.
All right. Um, thank you, Chris. The, uh, Megan's January, February, March reports she'd sent out last week. I think we went ahead and put them back in the packets. So folks that are attending the meeting could, could look at those, um, online. Really mostly what we're doing, and I'll, I'll cover her reports for today. She's been back and forth doing a lot of stuff for me. I know she's monitoring, uh, the meeting and the chat, chat volumes here. Um, the status of potential revenue impacts related to COVID-19, we're not seeing a whole lot. We had our director call this morning, went through, uh, budgeted expenses, uh, and also discussion on revenues with our teams. Um, we're certainly taking the approach of only necessary spend, um, and, and continuing to, to really watch, uh, things closely to see what happens with our revenues through the rest of the year. We are progressing on a couple of the, the larger projects. I mean, most namely the paving project. Uh, the, the balance there is we pave through the middle of downtown is, uh, when we do start opening back up and welcoming tourists, uh, having that downtown venue is another strong selling point, uh, for, for Alpine. Um, Eddie and team will continue to do, uh, their seal coating, but he and I can throttle, uh, spend on that as necessary. Um, really, uh, the other thing that our staff is working on right now is the five-year capital plans. Uh, they will have theirs done by the end of May. Um, and then at the end of May, we'll go out with a budget survey to council and, uh, look at expectations of council, uh, over the June timeframe. And then we'll, we'll move forward with some budget workshops in, in July as we've done in years past. Uh, but the goal will be not only to have a survey, but then also to have that five-year capital plan as, as presented by staff to you, uh, in the June timeframe. So, uh, I think, uh, that, that will be an important time for us to really look at, uh, where council wants to set property tax rates, um, and, and how we address some of our budgets, uh, as we, as we have a better handle on the impacts of COVID-19. Uh, also, we should be getting in our sales tax revenues, uh, this, this next week. Uh, I believe that will really be our March data that we'll be seeing. And so if you remember last council meeting, we flashed up that chart, uh, that shows month over month with our sales tax revenue. So, uh, certainly share that with, with council when that comes in. Um, last, last thing is our, our theme of funding opportunities and requirements. Talked about that a little bit earlier. Um, but we'll continue to work back primarily with, with Chief Martin and Scott Perry in, in those teams, but also Chris and Marcy playing impact on that. And we want to make sure that, that we address those, uh, theme of funding, um, opportunities through filling the proper, uh, paperwork that, that, that is required, uh, so that we can hopefully bring some dollars back, uh, back into the city budget. Um, Megan, I don't know if you are, are in a position to come off mute if there's anything else that I, that you felt like I missed.
No, I, I think you pretty much covered everything. You know, there's some great reports on this. And, you know, you and I have been staying in touch, uh, as to what's going on out here in Alpine, which is fantastic. So I applaud you for that and the great job you're doing out here.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And Mayor, I do have Police Chief. He's, uh, he's joined us. He's got a couple, couple slides to go over with us as well. Okay, Mayor?
Okay.
Megan, are you able to pull Chief off of you?
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yep, we can hear you. Maybe get a little bit closer to the mic.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Um, just a few things that I have going on here in the department is, uh, one of the things that I've done is, uh, I do require officers when they're greeting the public to, uh, wear a mask. We do have our mask in, uh, got our gloves in. And I'm asking them to be sure and wear masks and gloves when they're conducting business in the public. I feel that's to protect the officer and to protect the citizen. And, uh, hopefully it'll show that, you know, we're trying to do our best. Uh, I do have one officer in quarantine at this time, uh, hopefully to come out of quarantine in another week. Uh, we do limit the people coming into lobby, try to do our, our business through the intercom. But if they do need an officer, we will get one, uh, out to them. Uh, touching on the motels, the hotelers have been awesome to work with. I tell you, they, uh, they're, they're are what making this, everything work when it comes to dealing with the public. Uh, they've done an outstanding job. They really have. And my hat's off to them. Uh, still got officers doing the walkthroughs at porters, all the, all the retail stores here in town. And, uh, at seeing a presence, the, uh, the population seems to have kind of gone down this last weekend. The, the people are coming into town. Um, not sure what to contribute that to, but it seemed to be less people in our community last weekend. Um, next thing I was gonna touch on was the golf course. I have been in contact with them and they have proposed their own set of rules. Uh, you see them there on your screen. I can read them all to you if you would like. There they are. And they, uh, are requesting to, if, uh, once, if they activate orders at their golf course for their members only, that they will take the responsibility and enforce their rules and to open the golf course.
Oh.
Um, I kinda wanted to present that to council and get y'all's input. If you see something that may want to be added, free to let me know.
Well, going back, going back to the members, Chief, uh, that was one, uh, well, I got addressed with that question, but why only, uh, Alpine members? How about the other ones in the Tri-County? You know, they're members and they paid their, their fees. Why are they not being permitted? You had just, if, you know, we go by their, uh, suggestion, then that includes them also. And that solves that problem.
Yeah. And it is open to the Tri-County. It's Presidio, Jeff Davis, and Brewster County Members Only. Uh, before this was activated, we had it limited to Brewster County residents only. But this is what the board at the golf course came up with and said that this is what they wanted to enact.
One of the other items, um, that Chief had visited with, uh, the board president, a couple other members on the board is the governor came out with clarification last week, uh, on his intention on, on the executive order, uh, from the governor's office. And he indicated that his intention was pro shops would be closed. People could use the golfing facility if they met the social distancing protocol. Um, and of course restaurants, if they were at a golf course, they could be open if they met the protocol in, in the governor's order relative to restaurants being carryout only. Uh, ours doesn't have a, uh, a restaurant in it, so it wouldn't apply. The AG had also come out with an opinion. Uh, golf courses have been a hot topic, uh, really across the state of Texas. And Chief had requested the golf course to actually put something in writing to say, this is how we would self-govern. Um, I certainly think that, that's a step in the right direction. You know, many times in situations like this, people want you just to tell them, hey, just tell me what I gotta do. Just tell me what I gotta do. Um, but I think the golf course coming back and, and them getting their board together and saying, no, this is how we would operate to, to meet the, the orders of, of the state, uh, as well as what's being imposed in the county and the city. So to that point, uh, what is the action that council needs to do, if anything relative to this? Um, Rick, I, I really don't think there's, um, there's an action that council would have to take. Um, you know, this falls within the guidelines of the executive order that, uh, that the council took last week. But we didn't want to give the thumbs up until we had the opportunity to review, uh, with the mayor and, and all five members on the council. So it didn't catch anybody by surprise. So, so, oh, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. My view would be go with it.
Thank you. Uh, and that's kind of why I wanted to reach out to council and let them look at it and get, get everyone's input. I have a lot of, uh, people wanting it to open up. I have a lot of people not wanting it to open up. And as you see, one of the comments there, uh, that it should remain closed to everyone, it's not essential. And, and I respect that. Uh, but that's why I was asking for some feedback, maybe from council. Uh, I feel like they've come up with a great set of orders and, uh, I'm being assured that they are going to enforce them.
So Chief, what's the argument to say no to this? Because in my view, it's no different than if you're out cycling or running or hiking. It's the same ground rules. It just happens to be on the golf course.
I, I totally agree. Uh, and two, it's limited to the members only.
Yep.
Um, they, they pay for this and, and, you know, it's restricted. It's not open to the public. Uh, and it's like taking a walk in a park i- is the way I, I, I look at it.
You know, one thing I don't see on my screen is the wearing of masks.
You know, that's something I can reach out to them about if, if you think that would be, uh, I can recommend to them. And, and keep in mind, this, everything on this, they came up with to, and that could be something I could, I could mention to them.
Right. Cause I mean, once they leave the golf course, you know, they're gonna come into their family, back to the families, uh, and they've been intermingling with other folks. Don't tell them who they've contacted, at contact with. So I think it'd be very important that they do wear a mask.
Okay. And that's something I can reach out to them too. And, uh, hopefully they would implement that rule.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any, any other input?
All right, Mayor and Council, I think that's the longest city manager report ever. About forty-five minutes. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your input.
He just broke the record.
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to the public hearings. Uh, public hearing to obtain citizens' view and comment on ordinance twenty-twenty oh-four dash oh-one and ordinance of the city of Alpine, Texas, amending the Alpine Code of Ordinances, Chapter eighteen, Building and Building Regulations, repealing conflict in ordinances, providing a severability clause, providing a penalty not to exceed five hundred dollars, providing an active, an effective date. Do we have any comments?
Let's see. Mayor, I don't.
Rod?
I don't see any on the chat.
Well.
None? Okay, let's move on to the next one. Public hearings to obtain citizens' views and comments on ordinance twenty-twenty dash oh-three dash oh-three, establishing limited parking to thirty minutes between the hours of eight AM and five PM on weekdays in the one-hundred block of West Avenue E, located between Fifth and Sixth Street on both of the, of the north and south sides of the roadway, except on holidays. No one?
I don't see any, any, any chat comments, Mayor.
Okay. Then let's go ahead and it's go on to the consent agenda. Minutes, financial reports, department-written reports, board appointments, et cetera. Notice to the public, the following items are of routine administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and support material on each item, and/or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately, unless requested by council member, in which event the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in this normal sequence. And the items that require separate discussion have been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote. City Manager.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and, and City Council, we have two, two items on the consent agenda. First one is A, approval of minutes from the City Council meeting on April seventh, twenty-twenty. And the second is approved ratifying resolution twenty-twenty dash zero-one dash zero-four for signatories for all accounts with West Texas National Bank to include safe deposit boxes for the city of Alpine.
Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, uh, I propose that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made. And second, any discussion? All who's in favor, raise your right hand so I can see them. I'll oppose, like sign. Both should carry. Thank you very much.
I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Let's go on to, uh, item number eight, information or discussion items. And City Manager?
See, uh, we have one item for information discussion. It's an update on Big Bend Regional Medical Center. As we know, they, they filed the chapter eleven. Um, Rod Potten, uh, was gonna offer a few words for us.
Thank you, uh, Eric and Mayor. As y'all know, the, uh, Alpine Hospital filed for bankruptcy. I'm gonna give you all a little background so you understand what took place. The Big Bend Regional Medical Center is one of fourteen or fifteen hospitals that comprise a group called Quorum Healthcare. The Quorum Healthcare was spun off from its former parent company, Community Healthcare Systems, about three years ago. Community Healthcare Systems was the number three national hospital company, uh, way behind, uh, the number one and number two, which is Columbia HCA. And what they did three years ago is they took all their rural and underperforming hospitals and a whole bunch of debt and put them into a new company that they spun off called Quorum. So it was never going to really succeed that well because of the way it was structured. They, uh, the inevitable happened and, uh, Quorum has filed for bankruptcy, but it was called a prepackaged bankruptcy. And a prepackaged bankruptcy is where the corporation makes out a deal with its creditors and they agree on what's gonna happen. And what it does is it substantially reduces the debt load of the company. Now, out of all the hospitals in Quorum, one here in Alpine is number one. It's doing the best. So it's the one most likely to succeed. And the fact that the parent company has filed for bankruptcy and reduced its debt load really means there's gonna be less pressure on the Big Bend Hospital to pass money back up to the corporation and let, uh, the corporate, the corp, so the corporation will let Big Bend keep more of its earnings in Alpine and use it to. and use it to improve the healthcare system here. So it's a corporate restructuring that does affect Alpine. But in discussions with Rick Flores and doing some financial analysis, I think overall it's going to be a positive thing. I think Alpine Hospital would continue to succeed, hopefully with Quorum. But even if it got sold, I think it would continue to succeed because it's doing well.
We need to thank the CEO, Rick Flores, on that.
Yeah, he's, he's, he sort of turned it around and he's got a good attitude to try to turn it into more of a community oriented hospital. So I have a tip of the hat to him.
Absolutely. Any more discussion? Ramon?
Thanks, Rod.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much, Rod. Appreciate it. Okay, let's go to move to item number nine, action items to be accompanied by a brief statement of facts. Include where funds are coming from if applicable. Action items limited to up to 10 per meeting. After being called upon by the mayor, Mayor Proton, citizens are required to state their name and the ward in which they reside. Party will be given to the citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own businesses or property in the city. Limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak if there's time available. I am number one, Councilman Stevens.
So Mr. Mayor, I propose that the City Council approve the second and final reading of ordinance 2020 dash zero three dash zero three, establishing limited parking to 30 minutes between the hours of eight and five except for holidays on the 100 block of West Avenue E located between Fifth and Sixth Street, both the north and south sides of the roadway.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. There is a second on this.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Nice hand there, Rick. Okay, item two, City Manager.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, item two is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on the second and final reading of ordinance 2020 dash zero four dash zero one, an ordinance of the city of Alpine, Texas, amending the Alpine Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18 Building and Building Regulations, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing a severability clause, providing a penalty not to exceed $500, providing an effective date.
Okay, entertain a motion.
So Mr. Mayor, propose we approve the second and final reading of ordinance 2020 dash zero four dash zero one relative to modifications and amending the Alpine Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18 Building and Building Regulations.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and second, any discussion?
So.
Yes, sir.
The only question I'd have is did we resolve the concerns that were raised last time we had this discussion?
I think that was Councilman Escovedo.
Yes, sir. I, Councilor Escovedo and I did have a good chance to discuss and go through more detail. I put out the email to council last week and then she and I were able to review that as well.
Super. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, we'll vote on it. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, motion carries. Let's go to item number three, City Manager.
Get to that. Item number three is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2020 dash zero four dash zero three in ordinance establishing the transportation committee.
Yes, sir. Anybody make a motion? Yes, sir.
So Mr. Mayor, I propose that the City Council approve the first reading of ordinance 2020 dash zero four dash zero three, creating and establishing a transportation vision plan committee aimed at helping us have a better sense about the transportation requirements for the future of Alpine.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made and second, any discussion?
And Mayor, one of the questions that had come up when we originally looked at this was putting more detail into the expectations of the, of the committee. And so we, we encapsulated that in the revised ordinance. So I think we met the goal of our previous council meeting discussions where we really spelled out what we were trying to accomplish with the transportation committee. I, you know, the quiet zone, the outside of city train staff changeover. You know, looking at, you know, do we, do we do a move of the, the train in the truck traffic? All those things will be elements that the committee would explore and report back to council on.
Okay, and that's going to be very important for our future, especially with the train and of course, you know, doing an alternate route for the future of the freight trucks coming through. So that committee's got a job cut out for them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, motion carries. Item number four, City Manager.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, item four is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on approving animal permits for one horse. The horse to be located at 1602 North Seventh Street in Alpine, Texas. Applicant is Brett Welch. And that information was provided in your packets.
Okay. That would be in your ward? Where is she at?
Right here.
Maria.
Yeah, the guy called me the other day. He wanted to ask me about this and he said that only one person's complained about this and he's had this horse for a while. He had it at a different, a different residence. He just moved there like a year ago. So I don't know if that has anything to do with if anybody wants to not let him have a permit because he said he's had one for a long time.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Going to make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I guess, I guess I'll make the motion.
Yes, ma'am. That's why I gave it to you.
Sorry, I thought you were asking me a question. Um, we discuss, consider and take action to approve this animal permit for a horse on 1602 North Seventh.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made and second, any more discussion?
So I only have a question and that was what originally brought this up and you mentioned it, Maria, was the complaint that someone made about the dog yelping and the horse, whatever, causing some problems. I presume that's gotten worked. That's still a concern I have. And I know it came from another location, but you know, dogs yelping certainly might be a challenge for one of the residents because of the horse and I don't know the circumstances. I don't know, Chief, if you know the details behind it or not.
I'm here as well. This is Jennifer.
Yeah, Jennifer, yeah, that'd be helpful. Can you give us a little background?
Um, so I, I did receive an email, I believe, Chief or maybe it was Daryl sent, somebody had a complaint. I did Google map where this other person lived and they are significantly close to them, but they are within the, within the requirement. So their, their, their main complaint, it sounded like was that dirt was being picked up a lot and it was being blown into their property and into their pool. That's about the extent of the conversation I had with her. I'm not sure if she's actually here today or not on this meeting, but.
So Jennifer, let's assume the council were to pass this and there are additional issues, what actions would a citizen take to resolve those concerns or complaints that come up with regard to what they talked about, dust or, you know, a noise from the yelping dogs?
So I actually, I did communicate with the property owner that the horse is located at. And I mentioned that, that there were some complaints and he did, he did state that he had some, some things that he could do to knock down the amount of dust and also dealing with the dog as well. I guess the dog had, and you can actually see the dog in the pictures that I sent. Yeah, he also has access to the property and I think what's happening is the dog is, and the horses have been around each other a lot. They're, you know, buddies and they'll run around and the dog kind of riles and that also gets the dog, it also causes barking. The concern is, is, you know, it's a public nuisance when, when we're dealing with barking and also the dirt going onto the other property. So we'd have to look at those two things. You know, if he can't resolve barking and then the dirt going into the other property, then he would be in violation of the ordinance, which would also cancel out his permit. So. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So good. So he's well aware of cancel out his permit if he doesn't take the proper action.
Yeah, yeah, he needs to follow all ordinances so that his permit is still valid.
Okay. And how about the neighbor? How do we feel on, what's her take on it?
So the neighbor's going to be encouraged to call in if she's still having issues, of course, so we can address them. But as far as I know, I don't think that she wants the horse there. So, I mean, bottom line, she just doesn't want the horse.
Okay, any more discussion on this? Seems like a little touchy situation here. But we'll let the, we'll let the council ultimately decide on this then.
Yeah, he did have, he's had a permit with us, with the city since 2013 and we've never had a complaint at the other property. To keep that in consideration, I guess.
Yeah, this is Rick. I guess my foot is, we live in Alpine at the property. No complaints before. Certainly not everyone's comfortable having horses. But we are in West Texas and hopefully they can work it out. If not, there are remedies that can in fact be taken.
Okay. Anymore?
I agree with Rick.
Okay. All righty, so let's go ahead and vote on it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number five, City Manager.
All right, Honorable Mayor and City Council, item five is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action. If needed, amending ordinance 2020 dash zero three dash zero six and emergency ordinance instituting emergency measures due to a public health emergency for the city of Alpine. Before we have a motion on that, I just wanted to share, you know, counsel, I had sent out an objective statement earlier today with that matrix. Probably came, came to your email about three o'clock earlier today. What I'd like to do is share that objective statement because I think it's important. Because, you know, from a application perspective and what, what action council wants to take tonight. But let me just read the objective statement here. The city of Alpine took action on March 20th, 2020 to adopt emergency ordinance that provided direction and actions aimed at minimizing the health impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on the residents of Alpine. Those actions were necessary to ensure they should, there be cases in Alpine, medical support and healthcare infrastructure would not be overwhelmed. Thus far, the actions taken, including minimizing the opportunities from someone to bring COVID-19 from the outside and social distancing of work. Outside of those actions, however, has been a huge negative impact to hotels, restaurants and retail businesses. There is much that is not known about the impact of individuals who are carriers of COVID-19 but are asymptomatic. Further, there is new evidence that those who have been symptomatic of COVID-19 are not necessarily immune to have a relapse. We've received questions community wide about the rationale on restrictions when Alpine has not experienced a case of COVID-19. The goal since the original order was put in place on March 20th, 2020 was to eliminate or severely reduce our cases of COVID-19 in Alpine. We know our healthcare services were limited and we lived in a remote environment. The restrictions, along with the heightened awareness of health and sanitary practices, gave us the highest probability of achieving the goal. Moving forward, it's the intent of city of Alpine to maintain a healthy environment for residents while at the same time reducing restrictions on businesses as quickly as possible so they can return to normal business operations. Further, it is the intent of the city to encourage tourists to return to Alpine. The opportunity and challenge is to ensure all three intents are balanced. To the end, the city of Alpine is adopting a six level plan for hotels, short-term rentals, restaurants, retail businesses and travelers to and from Alpine. This approach is integrated with the healthcare and medical community. This plan also takes into consideration the president's phase plan and works in alignment with Governor Plan, Abbott's Plan for Texas. Further, the city is adopting a set of requirements for how individuals should interact with each other until such time as COVID-19 is no longer an issue. Basic ground rules, Brewster County is one of 57 counties or 254 counties in Texas with no COVID-19 cases. Unfortunately, the number of counties without COVID is decreasing about one per day. As such, it's only a matter of time before COVID-19 arrives and it will be brought by a visitor to Alpine or someone who went to another location in the state and then returned to Alpine. Following the guidelines of the state of Texas, social distancing and frequent hand washing remain the operative actions that everyone in Alpine need to follow. Anyone who enters a retail, hotel, motel, short-term rental lobby or restaurant is required to wear a face mask. The type of mask is left to the individual but must cover the mouth and nose. Further, it's expect, it is expected that those who depart Alpine to visit a known city location of COVID should self-isolate for 14 days on return to Alpine. The tiered response level, and then the matrix that we reviewed earlier in the meeting with Dr. Escobar defines actions to be taken dependent, depending on the tiered response level, which will be defined through action by the city council. The primary determinant of the risk assessment is defined in the top line of the matrix. Every effort will be made to ensure there's alignment with the state of Texas, Brewster County and Big Ben Regional Medical Center and Hospital District, the Alpine Independent School District and Sora State University. However, there may be differences from time to time that city council will need to address. The city of Alpine will be at level, response level three, effective April 24th, 2020. The city council will reconvene at a special meeting on Wednesday, April 29th, 2020 at 5:30 PM to review the upcoming governor's executive order planned for Monday, April 27th, 2020 and adjust our emergency ordinance as appropriate.
Very good explanation.
So Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a four-part motion associated with this action item.
Okay.
At first, the City Council amend ordinance 2020 dash zero three dash zero six and emergency ordinance instituting emergency measures due to the public health emergency as presented to City Council this evening. That number two, that the City Manager, that the City Council approve the objective statement and tiered response documents that have been presented this evening. That number three, that the City Council adopt tier level three for implementation going forward until such time as it's changed. And number four, that the City Council resolve to meet on April 29th to reassess the situation.
Is there a second on the four-part motion?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this?
Did the city secretary get all of that? And like, since it's recorded, it shouldn't be an issue.
I did get recorded. I mean, I did get some of it, but I am going to go back to the recorded.
Good. Thanks, Cynthia.
Yeah, one, one, well, a couple of items that I need to ask the City Manager. Can we publish this in the newspaper? Because not everybody will go into the city website. So everyone's aware of it. Because I think this is very crucial because we do have people that, you know, talk about going El Paso, talk about going to Midland Odessa. So they're, they're all aware about the ordinance we're going to vote on.
Yes, we, we can get an email though or to, to the newspaper as well as not just getting our, our website, but we can get to the other media websites. You know, John Waters has been posting stuff online with the Big Ben Gazette, Stephen Paul. You know, John Waters has been posting stuff online with the Big Ben Gazette, Stephen Paulson, I talked to him yesterday from the Big Ben Sentinel. So we'll have Cynthia get it over to JT Maroney and staff at the Avalanche, and hopefully that can get in the Thursday edition, too.
Okay, great. My second one is, I think it'd be advantageous for the county to kind of go over this, I think it's very important, kind of give them some guidelines or structure as to what they can, they can follow. Because yesterday at our, at our, we, by, we went on forever with the hotels, and maybe this kind of gives them some guidance on it.
Yes, sir.
And just FYI, Mayor, we won't be able to see it in the papers till next Thursday.
Right, next Thursday.
The deadline was at noon today.
Yeah, okay, very good. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of this four-part motion, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's go to item number six.
Let's see, that's for Councillor Escovedo, is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four, dash zero four, an ordinance establishing handicap and emergency parking at Our Lady of Peace Catholic Church on Fifth and Guy.
Councilman Escovedo, will you please make that motion?
I'll make a motion to take appropriate action on the first reading of the ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four, dash zero four, an ordinance establishing handicap and emergency parking at Our Lady of Peace Catholic Church on Fifth and Guy.
Is there a second on this?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to city council member comments and answers. And let's see, where do I start today? Let's start with Ms. Councilperson Curry.
Well, I, I'm really grateful that we have everybody working on this whole, this whole matrix and the, and getting the city back in order and, but still keeping everybody's safety in mind. It's, that's super important, and I'm, I'm really glad that we have a guideline to follow now, and thanks for all the hard work y'all did.
Okay, thank you very much, man. Councilman Olivas.
No great comment, but I just want to, everybody is to be safe out there.
Okay, and we'll go to Ms. Councilperson Fitzgerald.
Yes, I agree that this.
Okay, and let's go over to Councilperson Stevens.
You don't want to get Lucy in there first?
Well, I'm sorry, Lucy, I skipped you.
It's okay. I just wanted to thank y'all for doing a great job with the, the presentations and everything, with everybody coming together. It's really important, especially during this time. The information is really, really excellent and the best.
Very good. Any more? Okay, Councilman Stevens.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Now, I want to add one of those comments as well. There's a huge amount of work and effort going on behind the scenes that most do not see. We're in tough times, certainly the businesses are challenged in a huge way. I hope Congress finally gets the round two of their stimulus three point five passed. I know the Senate was working it tonight. Because of the roughly eighteen million businesses in the US, only one point five million were able to take advantage of the paycheck protection program. And that's a huge impact to what goes on in Alpine for our businesses, so I just hope everyone's taking advantage of that. I'm also optimistic that everyone in Alpine is gonna wear their doggone masks. I think that's the biggest concern that I have, is that people are gonna be self-conscious, don't want to wear them. I think it's up to all of us and the leadership we can provide to ask people to wear their mask. I'll tell you, I've got, said I got a mom who's eighty-nine years old with all the underlying conditions, that's why I'm spending an awful lot of time here, and I beam in in the middle of the night and beam out in the middle of the night out of Alpine to get on my way, and most have no idea if I've been there or not. But the rules here are very simple. You walk into a business, you wear a mask. And if you don't, you don't get accepted. I think it's gonna be up to us to help everyone govern in that way, to be able to cut this down. Because my biggest fear is not if it comes to Alpine, it's when it comes to Alpine, and will we be ready to respond to it? Otherwise, we're gonna go right back up the chain from a, potentially where we are a tier three to a tier two to immediately to a tier four, and that, I think, would be devastating to what the Alpine, so, thanks very much for the leadership that the city staff and everyone's providing to that. That's what it's gonna take to get through. Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments. And I'm gonna kind of piggyback or chime in on what you said. You know, we as the elected leaders of the city should be wearing these masks, not part-time, but at all times when you go into public buildings and whatnot, or you have contact with somebody, wear those masks, because you're the example and the leadership of the city. And if you're not wearing it, why should everybody else follow it? There was a comment made the other day, there was an elected official, not from the city, that was at Porter's, and this lady was wearing her mask, gloves and everything, and walked right to his face and said, where is your mask? You're an elected official. And I just happened to be standing there with my blue mask and gloves, and I kind of just chuckled, just kind of looked at him and winked, and I walked off. But I think he got the message, but I think with us as the leaders, we need to be out there in the forefront of this. And I think what city council did a month ago in passing the ordinance, did a fantastic job. I know it was a hard to swallow pill, because it was gonna affect the economy of Alpine, but I think in what city council did has kind of put the tapers on the virus here in our area. So I want to thank each and every one of the council members. City manager, you also for leading the forefront, partaking those city meetings, city meetings twice a week with the county. Fantastic job to the team. Sheriff, and thank you for going out there and, and checking up, following up on, on what ordinance we passed, to make sure it's being followed. Sheriff, I'm sorry, police chief, I already elevated you. But no, I just want to thank each and every one of you for the fantastic job.
Mayor, I want to thank the chief also for the work that he did on the parking at Our Lady of Peace, and of course, what the, he's implementing, but the police officers, thank you so much.
Okay, well, you get all kinds of kudos there, chief. Any more comments? Okay, so let's move on to the executive session.
Mr. Mayor, given we have no executive session, I move adjourned.
And that's not debatable. We're adjourned. Thank y'all very much.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.